We'll call the April 17 Reno County Board of Zoning Appeals meeting to order. Staff, will you please call the roll?
Nysen. Strain.
Here.
Schaefer.
Here.
Seltzer.
Here.
Macklin.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Gerson.
Here.
Welcome, everyone. I trust that you've all had a chance to review your packets. And those packets were the minutes from the February 20 BZA meeting. Chair will entertain them.
So moved.
Second. We move to second any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Minutes are approved. To ensure the rights of all parties of interest and to provide an opportunity for each party to address the Board of Zoning Appeals in an orderly manner, the BZA will follow the fact-finding procedure which is outlined in the handout on each chair. Your attention to this procedure is appreciated. All decisions by the BZA are final. Decisions may be appealed to the District Court within 30 days of the decision. If a decision is made tonight, that decision will be based upon the record of information presented to the BZA. I'll now formally open the public hearing regarding case number 2025-03, a request by Jerry and Galen Boone for a special exception from Reno County zoning regulations to construct a 50-foot-by-150-foot residential accessory building with a 10-foot-by-50-foot covered porch and permit a total of 10,050 square feet of accessory buildings. The total square footage of all accessory buildings exceeds 5,000 square foot maximum permitted on a parcel greater than 2.0 acres in size. The property is zoned R1 Rural Residential District and R2 Suburban Residential District and located at 3610 East 56th Street. Has any BZA members had any outside contacts regarding this case?
No.
No.
Do any BZA members have conflict of interest in this case?
No.
No.
Will the applicant please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record? You have 10 minutes to present your case. Additional time may be allotted to the applicant at the discretion of the chair. BZA members may request clarification at the end of your presentation or may have questions.
Well, thank you all for joining today and making it here. I'm humbled by the presence of our little shop expansion project that we're thinking for our residential home. Use of this shop is something that I and my wife have dreamt of for most of our adult lives, is to actually have some room to keep our vehicles indoors, do some of our personal hobbies, which include an art studio for her. She's an accomplished artist. I am a tinker among many things in the shop and automotive restoration, aircraft restoration, and other certain things that are of interest to me in the shop. I also have a 100,000-square-foot business here in Hutchinson that I conduct my commercial business in, so there's no conflict here that there would be a commercial use for this building. This is all personal hobby and residential. Let's see. Late in the time the property's been vacant, this has been a residential homestead for all the better portion of 40 years or 50 years, I'd say. We picked this up about 10 years ago, and we've been slowly making improvements to the property out there in the sand hills in this area. It's a challenge to keep the trees at bay, and there's a lot of things working in the environment on a 30-acre parcel like this. So constructing this building will help us store some of our equipment that we maintain the property as well with, so that'll be in check as well. I feel the property is suitable for what we're using it for. And in our area, there's a number of buildings that are near similar to what we have in mind here that are being used as kind of what we call a shome these days, or a shop home of some sort, with a metal skin structure and, you know, used for a large automotive garage or storage areas for people that are erecting these types of buildings. Another plus for our building is that it's got quite a setback from many things. We're over 200 foot setback from 56th Street, and we have quite a number of trees in between the road and where the building's to be erected, which is on purpose. We don't necessarily want it to be seen by everybody that's driving by or whatnot. It's kind of a private area for us, and we'd like to keep it that way, so. Let's see. Public health and safety and welfare, hardship. We don't really see that the shop would cause any concern. There was a little bit of talk of concern that we have a drainage area in this section here, which in Kansas, we're used to looking at a pretty flat parcel, you know, but out here in the sand hills, this has some waves and bumps to it. And this area right is a ridge right here, is about 15 foot above the average water that we have in this runoff pond over here. So it's quite a bit higher, and it's actually higher on this ridge than Tobacco Road, which runs over here as well. So we don't see that we're really interrupting any drainage concerns at all with it, so. Also, running to the north of our pond here, there's another pond behind it that's empty that's a spillover. And then further, for about another 500 feet back, is lowlands that also absorb water. We can, we realize what the flow of the water is when we look at the Google Earth image from 2019. We had approximately three feet of rain in that month of March or in that timeframe of 2019, which was a really excessive amount of rain. So we really saw exactly what the drainage design was made for and what it accomplished during that type of. As far as other buildings go, this isn't the only building on the property. We've had this small little shop since, that was, had a building permit in the '90s, I believe, and erected there. It's fairly small, maybe a couple of cars and stuff. We're planning to probably take that building down and turn that into a little greenhouse. And then we've got another little building up here that's just horse stalls. We've got six horses on the property, and so we take care of storing some hay in there and some feed and things. We've got a couple little outbuildings here, which will probably go away with the addition of the larger space to consolidate everything into one space as well. They're just small garden sheds and things like that, so. And we did provide a list of neighbors within 1,000 to 1,200 feet of the site on a list for polling, and hopefully we didn't have anybody that had any problems with that. We do plan to put a restroom in the shop. It's a little ways to run to the house and back, so we're planning for potentially a septic area out in this area, which we'll be talking to Sanitaria at some point about that. We'll have water in the shop as well. We have a well down here that's in operation and been there for some time that we're planning to trench water to run up to the shop and use it. Install pressure tanks and things in the shop to have a healthy well system there. Right now, there's no pressure tank. It's just on a switch to fill our horse tanks, so. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you for hearing.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I guess I see in the pictures several vehicles around there that you indicated you've been using to maintain the property. Will all of those vehicles wind up in the new building?
I think so. So the, you know, we've got a tractor, a utility vehicle. We've got an RV here, which we're planning for an RV storage section on the end of it, so it would go in there. You know, some of the other vehicles, you know, we've just moved away from them, and they just need to be sold. They're running. This is an aircraft trailer right here that contains a glider sailplane, and I've got a couple of those. I'd like to get those inside, so, yeah.
It looks like the building would be suitable for somebody to stay overnight. Any indication you'd ever, you used it for that?
Not for us. We've got a pretty cozy house and such, and we just really want to do our hobbies in it. We did include the porch in the front here because we have such a beautiful pond to look out on that it'd be nice for, Lynn's going to do her artwork and stuff, to be able to push out onto the patio and be inspired and create new things, so it'll be really pretty.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Read it here from the staff.
Mark Montatchen, County Planner. So to help orient the board here, 56th Avenue is running east to west across the bottom, and you've got Tobacco Road on the west side and then old K61 on the east side of the property. We're just north of the city of Hutchinson if you don't quite know where this is at here. The little area that's zoned R2, that used to be a separate parcel with a separate residence on the property. That residence has now been removed and purchased by Mr. and Mrs. Boone, and so it's just been kind of combined with everything that's R1, but that's kind of the reason that little area was zoned R2. It was for no other reason than it used to be a separate parcel of ground with a house on that. So as you heard, this is a request to construct a 50-by-150 building with a 10-by-50 porch on the front. I did include the porch in the calculation, but for the fact that if in the future they wanted to enclose that for whatever reason, then there shouldn't be any issues with zoning on enclosing that. And so I noticed it as like about an 8,000-square-foot building. There were four other buildings that we used to come up with the total calculation of 10,050 feet. One building, as you mentioned, you see here in the picture, the 24-by-30 did receive a permit in 1996, and there's a couple of other small sheds, the 10-by-13 and 20-by-20 that I have no permit on file, and then there's another 20-by-40. I think we're mainly talking about these buildings up here and then like a smaller shed. If the intent is to remove the sheds or so, then we don't necessarily need to have a permit now on file here. And if the other buildings are strictly for ag purposes, we can just get a no-fee permit on file for those buildings, and then that would be in compliance with the zoning regulations. Location of the building, as you see there, will be centered in the southern half of the parcel. I'll have some other pictures of it here, but you'll see the approximate location of the building. Probably the, oh, it's probably 60% of the property is woods, and then the northern part of the property is what I would call like agricultural land. It's with no woods, and so they have chosen this spot here. And again, their house is right here in the corner, and I'll have some better pictures of that as well. This is the proposed shed that they're looking at constructing on the property. You can see the porch that's out in front, and you said the pond would be facing to the left, and so that's where that's located. So that's what they were looking at, constructing with the overhead doors. These I included. I submitted these for the file by staff. This was not submitted by the applicant here. It's included in your packet. It's not the greatest picture, but it does help show what we're concerned about. Right now, this is in a platted subdivision filed in 1990, and the area that I calculate where they want to construct that building is located within a platted drainage way. And then we have a small utility easement that comes out to the highway or Old 61 Highway right there, and so we need to get that kind of figured out. And I've been in discussions with Mr. and Mrs. Boone on that, and I believe that they have contacted a surveyor, and they're looking into that, to have those drainage ways and that easement possibly vacated. There are several options that you can do that. You can vacate the whole entire drainage easement if it's not necessary. We can vacate a portion of the drainage easement, enough to get the building out of that drainage easement, or they can even do a replat of that subdivision if they want. I think that right now, they're still kind of weighing their options. The other photo that I did submit, and again, it's not survey accurate, but by my calculation, I show at least a portion of that building being located within that drainage easement and possibly located within the utility easement. I think when the survey comes back, they're going to locate that building on the survey, and then that'll give us a definitive answer as to whether it's located in the utility easement or not, and then that'll kind of give us a direction on what we need to maybe do to kind of rectify the concern out there, because we don't want to have a building located in a drainage easement or utilities. Again, the 24-by-30 building I have shown as being located in the drainage easement, but as I noted in the report, it's no record as to whether it was just constructed there without realizing it was a drainage easement, or whether staff issued the permit incorrectly. There's no, nothing in the records that indicates how that happened, but it looks like that building could possibly be in that drainage way. The extent of that is this line that goes east-west right here still, but the existing house is not in that drainage. It's just everything to the north, so it's kind of interesting how they developed this subdivision back in the 1990s and why they had that whole entire area as a drainage way in that parcel. This is a picture of the property. As you can see, probably over half at least, 60% of it is going to be in the woods. Again, you can see the two paws that Mr. Boone alluded to right here, and the building would be situated in this area. Little bit closer shot, you can see their existing house, the existing building, and then their new building would go up just right to the north of that existing shed according to what their site plan showed. Again, a little bit closer shot than that. This is, I just took this shot of the area all looking to the west, so Tobacco Road is up on the top of the screen, and 56th Avenue is to the left here, just kind of showing you some of the size of the parcels that would be looking at it from the west. And then we got one parcel here that's on the south side.
Mark, what is the kind of general drainage for that pond? It seems like a sizable amount of water.
I do not know the drainage on that. This is a picture from Google Earth taken from June of 2024, so you can see the existing building way in the background right there, so that the new building would be behind that. This is taken from Old 61. Again, several trees here. Doesn't mean that they will always be there, but that's be like the existing conditions right now, so, you know, the building should be pretty well hidden from that versus if you would put the building on the northern part of the property where it's mainly an open pasture agricultural area right there. Reviewing all the characteristics, I think, of the property, I think the location that they had chosen is really probably the best location to provide the most, you know, coverage of that building versus having it out in the open land. These are all houses that are up and down Tobacco Road, so. As I noted in the report, I do have some concerns about the current and potential future use of the building being turned into a commercial. You did hear testimony from Mr. Boone says not the intent of them to turn this into a commercial building, but I think I'd like to remind the board, though, you know, that this procedure helps to clarify that and put that on record that it's going to be for a residential purpose only. Future use of the building, they would have to come in through the conditional use permit process that we have in place right now to convert that building from a residential use into a commercial use, and certainly by the looks of it, it could be of some value potentially for a future commercial use, but that's just something that we'll have to, you know, monitor and hope that a future owner of that property visits with staff before they go and try and open up any kind of business there out of that building in the future. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the request. Approval is to not exceed a 50-by-150 with a 10-by-50-foot covered porch or 8,000 square feet, so what that means is if they, for some reason, want to change the dimensions a little bit, they can do that as long as they stay under the 8,000-square-foot limit that's in here. The accessory buildings shall only be used for non-commercial, non-industrial purposes without a conditional use permit. The accessory building shall not be used as a single-family dwelling, except in compliance with the regulations. And then I did add a fourth one stating that no zoning permit shall be issued for the building if it is located within the platted easement. So your consideration, should you choose to approve that, would be to allow them to put that building practically anywhere on the property so long as it's in compliance with the zoning regulations. And so if by chance they would want to move it somewhere else on the property that's not in a drainage easement or not within a utility easement, they'd be permitted to do that unless you have a certain condition attached that says that, no, they have to build it in that particular spot. So if they choose, they could put it up in the northern part of their property that they own, so. With that, I would stand for any questions.
What is the process for getting a variance on the drainage easement?
It wouldn't be a variance situation. The better option would be really to just vacate it. It's the same type of process. We've done many vacations, you know, in the past, and there'd be certain assurances that we would need, and the same ones would go through any type of variance situation. So the better option really is to vacate it, to have an engineer be able to look at that and decide that that drainage easement is no longer needed, no longer of value, and then we can go through that vacation process and get rid of that. And with all the proper documentation, I would say they should be, you know, a fairly simple process, although it is lengthy, you know, in that sense to go through here.
In one of your pictures, it showed that there's potential of it. Their property is a combination of two, like in that far, you have the blue outline, yes. It looked like the building is going to slide over that boundary. That's going to be a problem in the future, I would think. Has that been rectified?
It's been combined, so, yeah, it shows it as being like a separate parcel. They have combined it right now for tax purposes. If you look at the zoning map on here, it shows it as being combined, so. What I noticed, that's the parcels that they own right now.
So it's combined now, but you've got two platted lots and then the little third.
And then unplatted lot.
Right. So is there a possibility that a future owner could come and break this property back up, and then you have a large building right next to a small lot?
They could, yeah, because it's unplatted right now, that little lot, so if they chose, they could just take that legal description and sell that legal description to somebody else, and then, yeah, we would have a situation where that building could be potentially approaching on that property or be right next to a future property line. But as it is right now, it's all one big parcel, so when they would come through and do a lot split, that's something that I would look at and be able to verify that that building will meet the setback of the new parcel line that is being created. And so if it is closer there, then they may not be able to take that legal description. They would have to adjust that, adjust that down.
They have to come through you to note that, right?
Yeah.
So like a future owner could buy this whole big property and then take that little R2 corner, sell it, file a deed at the courthouse, and then you've got a big building right on the fence line.
Yeah, but that future owner should obviously be aware of that type of situation, though. But, yeah, it would have to come through you to do that.
Is there a way to prevent that?
Platted. They could replat, they could replat everything that they own right now and then add that in there as part of their replat, and then that would fuse that together so that if they were ever want to sell a corner of that to somebody else, then they'd have to come and do a lot split. Do you mean? I think in verbal conversations, I think one of their options, and probably the best option for them, is to even vacate the whole entire plat and just turn this all back into a tract of ground instead of four separate lots, you know, but if they vacate the entire plat, then they're going to need the signatures of the other owners as well, so that's, I think that's one option that they're weighing, and they may be able to explain where they're at on that process during a rebuttal, if you want.
Any other questions for staff? Thanks, Mark.
Hey.
If there is anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this case, you may have five minutes to comment. Please come forward to the podium one at a time and state your name and address for the record before commenting. Audience members are only permitted to address the BZA from the podium. Audience members are permitted only one time at the podium. In the interest of time, if you agree with comments previously made by audience members, please don't repeat the comments. Simply state you agree with the previous and then present new information to the BZA. Statements and questions should only be directed to the BZA, not to the applicant or staff. The BZA may choose not to answer questions or engage with the public. Questions regarding the application can be asked to the BZA and answered by the applicant or staff during the rebuttal phase of the public hearing. If there are any ones that would like to speak. Does the applicant wish to rebut? Any new statements being made? Have any additions?
Let me do it.
You're in trouble.
Okay. Yeah, he's the sitting on the ranch person.
You've got two minutes of time.
I bought this at an auction and tore a ranch for my horses. It wasn't till we bought it, we discovered it had been platted into a subdivision. The north section of the subdivision is 12 acres. I've tried to buy it from Greg Lackey, who inherited it from his mother. He has now combined it with their storage unit place across the way. They also would like to remove the entire plating of the subdivision. Unfortunately, the little section number 21 that's out is, it was in foreclosure. We went to the auction two weeks ago at the courthouse to try to buy it and solve this problem, and just as they were going to put the hammer down, they canceled the auction because it's five years behind on taxes. So I cannot find a person, because it's a mortgage company, to get the signature on that, so we are going to buy it if it comes up to the tax auction, so then we can vacate everything. But that's October. We thought we had this taken care of, but in the meantime, we would like to remove as much of the plating as possible. There is no utilities within any of the easements. We had gas stuff. We have garbage survey looking into it right now, and we should have all that done. And, oh, by the way, the drainage thing, it bisects the property when it does flood, when we've had that flood, it goes from this pond through here and across over to that property. It doesn't even come up towards our houses, and we are not going to do anything with them that is not either livestock or fun personal. It's not going to be business. It's not going to be business. I'm trying as much as possible to turn all this area to a ranch.
Any additional questions?
No. I'm excited. Go ahead. Thanks.
Thank you. Staff, do you have any rebuttals?
Just one bit of information, not necessarily relevant to the special exception. Statute will allow the county commissioners to conduct the public hearing on any type of vacation, and so that would help speed up that process a little bit if they can get all the signatures. Typically, we take it through the planning commission and then with a recommendation up to the county commissioner, but talking to the county councilor, if they can get all the signatures and if there's no, no concerns with that, then we could potentially take that to, directly to the county commissioners. And so, but like you heard, they're kind of, there's an issue with parcel 21 out there right now, so.
And I understand this, here's this process of vacating. It may take a while. I don't know what their construction schedule is, but, you know, they probably can't begin construction until they've worked out some of these details as far as replacement of the building, you know, with the easements and the drainage and whatnot, right?
Right. They're, they're working on some of those details right now, I believe, here just to kind of see is there a possibility. You, you heard testimony that, you know, there are no utility easements in there, so that's one big hurdle to find out, yeah, are there any utilities in any of those easements? Do any of the utility companies have a concern, you know, about that? The other thing would be the drainage. We need to ensure that, that the drainage plan, if there was one, put in place at that time. Are there any concerns if we vacate that and essentially do away with that drainage plan? And that's what we're working on right now. And so if there isn't, then we can probably move forward with some type of vacation of the plat or at least a vacation of the drainage, so we can get them a permit if this is approved tonight.
Now, you also, I saw somewhere in there, there's an abandoned septic system and an abandoned well.
Yeah, in the, in the comments, I think.
Health sanitation department or whatever.
I don't know if it's shown, it wasn't shown. Might have been on another, another document.
That's on the comments, you know, from the environmental specialists.
That would be taken care of, you know, it could be taken care of any time. It would definitely be taken care of, like I say, during the permitting process.
Should that be made a condition of approval or not?
My opinion, no. That's something that environmental is, is aware of, and they'll, they'll ensure that that, that takes place. I don't, I don't think that's necessary. That's my opinion. You can if you want, but, you know.
Good question. That was written on my mind, too. Got it? Thank you. Does the BZA have any further questions of the applicant or staff? None, I'll declare the public hearing now closed. Acceptance or denial of the special exception must be based on the public hearing record of information and in its opinion. As a matter of fact, such special exception will not adversely affect the uses of adjacent and neighboring properties. This is a time for BZA to discuss the case and ask procedural questions of staff only. Is there any further discussion on this case? Seeing none, chair will entertain a motion on this case.
I'd move the case number 2025-03, a request by Jerry and Gaglin Boone requesting a special exception under Reno County zoning regulations to prevent the total square footage of all accessory buildings on the parcel to exceed the 5,000 square foot limit in the R1 rural residential district and R2 suburban residential district at 3610 East 56th Avenue will be approved, allowing a building 50 by 100 foot, 150 foot with a 10 foot by 50 foot covered porch in size for a total of 10,050 square feet of total accessory building square footage as requested in the application and subject to conditions listed above based on, based upon the reasons stated in the staff report as heard at this public hearing.
I'll second. I'll move it second, and is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, staff, please call a roll.
Stran?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Seltzer?
Yes.
Macklin?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Gerstsen?
Yes. Motion carries. Is there any other business needs to be brought before the BZA?
I do not have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Board, any, any new business? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the BZA.
So moved.
Second. Moving second, any discussion? All in favor of adjournment of the BZA, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. BZA is adjourned. Okay. Call the April 17 Reno County Planning Commission to order. Staff, will you please call a roll?
Nicely. Stran?
Here.
Schaefer?
Here.
Seltzer?
Here.
Macklin?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Gerstsen?
Here.
Again, I'll, I'll trust if you had a chance to see them, to review the minutes from our March 20 meeting, chair will entertain a roll, entertain a motion on those minutes. Here you go. Second. Moving second, any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Disapproval, say the same sign. Minutes are approved. Okay. Kansas Supreme Court has defined a conditional use permit public hearing as a quasi-judicial function. To ensure the rights of all parties' interest and to provide an opportunity for each party to address the planning commission in an orderly manner, the planning commission will follow a fact-finding procedure which is outlined in the handout on each chair. Your attention to this procedure is appreciated. If a recommendation is made tonight, that recommendation will be based upon the record of information presented to the planning commission. The county commissioners will not conduct a separate public hearing or accept additional written documents. The county commissioners will consider written documents for additional public comment or documents based only on the valid claims that the public hearing process was incomplete or based upon new information which has become available since the public hearing. For purposes of this public, of this county commission policy, the public hearing is considered incomplete only if the planning commission failed to follow its procedural guidelines, which resulted in a denial of due process to a party of interest or if the planning commission failed to allow an interested party an opportunity for public comment. For purposes of the county commission policy, new information shall pertain only to germane information which did not exist at the time of the public hearing or which was unknown or could not have been discovered with reasonable diligence. An example may be a traffic study completed after the planning commission recommendation. Planning commission recommendation to the county commissioners will be accompanied by the summary of proceedings before the planning commission at its public hearing along with the report and recommendation of the county planner, letters, informal petitions, and other information constituting the record of proceedings provided to the planning commission before and during the public, the public hearing. If the planning commission makes a recommendation after tonight's public hearing, this case will be presented to the county commissioners at their next available meeting after the protest period expires. Contact planning staff or visit the website for the county commissioner agenda items. Any party who wishes to require the county commissioners to decide this case by a supermajority vote may file a protest petition pursuant to KSA 12-757 at the office of Reno County Clerk 125 West First Avenue, Hutchinson, Kansas, within 14 days following the decision by the planning commission. The form is on, the form is on the Reno County website, planning department webpage. I'll now formally open, get my stuff in the road here. Case number 2025-04, a request by Rocky and Dana Smith for a conditional use permit to place a 1995 or newer manufactured home on a parcel of land zone R1 rural residential district. The property is located at 6605 East Fourth Avenue. Have any of the planning commissioners had any outside contacts regarding this case?
No.
No.
Do any of the planning commission members have conflict of interest with this case?
No.
No.
Will the applicant please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record? You have 10 minutes to present your case. Additional time may be allotted to the applicant at the discretion of the chair. Planning commission members may also request clarification at the end of their presentation or may have questions.
Good afternoon, and as a previous applicant, I appreciate all your time. Sorry for my voice, it's about gone. I was at a track meet yesterday all day long yelling at grandkids, so if I lose my voice, it's because of that. My name is Rocky Smith. I've been in this area my entire life. I've lived on the, over by Bueller on 43rd Avenue for the last 27 years with my wife, Dana. And so we're, we're both from the area and, and we're, uh, home, home people here. But anyway, to make a long story short, I needed a place to move my mother-in-law to. And I bought this trailer. It's a manufactured 1995 CHAM cam mobile home. It's a nice peaked roof, shingled roof trailer. It's got good siding. It's, it's a really nice trailer. Bought it from Jim Heber, and the, the price included setting it up and leveling it and putting the AC in it and everything. And I, I had five acres of land that belonged to my stepson, and we were getting ready to put this land, put it on this land, and that all fell through. So I've owned this trailer for over a year now, and I've been trying to find a place to put it. And this little parcel of land came up for sale. Well, it didn't actually have a for sale sign on it. I seen the, a preferred roofing sign out front and, and a little excavator out there and a little skid steer out there. They were working on cleaning it up. And I stopped and talked to him and ended up making a verbal deal to buy it from him, and we finished cleaning it up. And just the cleanup, this thing was covered with cedars and PSMs and just nasty. And you couldn't even tell that there was wellhouses and, and electrical hookups in there. You didn't even know it until we got it all cleaned up. And just cleaning it has raised the property value of that area tremendously. So it looks real nice now. But anyway, we, I bought it knowing, because I've already made the verbal deal, and I called Mark after I kind of did that, and he said, well, it's been rezoned in 2016. Because I know from growing up in the area that there was two trailer houses on that short acre in the 70s and 80s when I was going to school and it being, just knowing the, knowing the area. And so I didn't think there would be a problem with putting a trailer on there, you know. But anyway, Mark informed me that, yeah, it was rezoned in 2016, and you're going to need a conditional use permit. So this is the process, and I really appreciate all Mark's help. He's, he's done a lot of groundwork for me. He helped me a lot, so I appreciate that. But anyway, that's my plan, is to put this 1995 manufactured home on here. I know all the distance rule. There's plenty of room there to put this home back there in the back, away from the fences and away from the east and west fences away. And to the south is nothing but 80 acre pasture. And I'm good friends with Mark, Mike Groves, and him and I have talked about it, and he's not got an issue with it. And he, the, the neighbor to the east, which is right on, next to it, I just met him, and he was the actual, his wife was the actual owner that lived in the trailer houses right by it. And when her mother passed away in the yellow house there, they moved into it and then sold off the trailer houses and then let that land go. And I don't know how they lost it or sold it or whatnot. He didn't really go into that. And anyway, I ended up purchasing this land and put the trailer house on it. It's already got two wells, and it's got a septic system on it, and I will have those inspected and make sure that they're good to use, because if they're not, I will get it re-permitted and put in something. I don't want to have to be out there messing with the, the septic and the well. Like I said, I've been in this area for my whole life. I own property on 43rd. You can drive by at any time. It's always kept. And my wife and I will keep this property just the same. I own property on Green Acres Road, which is just down the street from there, and that property is kept nice. This is not going to be a rental. It's going to be for my mother-in-law. She's ailing and aging, and we need her a place to go. We fought the Section 8 deal as long as we can fight it. And I don't know if you're aware of it, but, you know, you're in the system, they give you a one-year contract, and then it's month to month, and if they find somebody that can pay more, they kick you out. And that's just the way it is. But anyway, I'm tired of it. We've moved her four times. I'm going to put something permanent in that we can take care of her in, and it'll look nice. It's not going to be an eyesore to anybody. I can attest to that, and you can drive by my properties and attest that my wife and I will take care of it. And we're not, we don't live that far away. I'm within five minutes of this property. I just recently retired from Sunoco after 45 and a half years, and I'm going to have time on my hands, so that's what I'll be doing. I entertain questions. I may not have all the answers, but like I said, it's, Jim Hebert's going to set it up. It'll be set up right. We'll put the pads in, and I'll make sure that the septic and the wells have been inspected and are good to use. And if they're not, I'll go through the proper procedures to get them in properly. I don't know if I left anything out. I'm trying to just wing it.
Any questions for the applicant?
Should I ask a personal question?
Yep.
Was your father Bob Smith?
Yep.
I grew up with Bobby.
Did you?
High school.
Yeah. Good. I probably look like him, because I've, I've got all these pictures up there, and I look just like him. That's probably how you recognize me, huh?
You've used the term trailer and several different terms, so I had in my mind that this was a manufactured home, so I'm just wanting to.
It's, it's a mobile home.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how will that be? Will be set on a foundation of any kind or?
No, it'll be set on pads. I'll, I'll pour two pads that are 30 inches wide by 75 feet long, six inches deep, and then he'll anchor it to those two strips. And it'll be skirted and, and nice.
Only plans for this one mobile home on this property?
One.
Yeah. Any other questions for the applicant?
I have one, Mr. Chair. Rocky, just a clarification, in the application, you said 1995 or newer, and so the pictures you submitted with the application, that is the manufactured home, and it is a 1995.
I got the title here if you need to see it.
We'll eventually need it if this is approved for the permit and stuff, but I just didn't know if you were looking at something different than maybe newer when you wrote that.
Jim's looking for me a nicer double wide. And if I can find one before we make final plans, I'll get with you and make sure that that, because I won't buy something that's less than what I've got. And I'll use this to maybe just swap him out, trade in for the price of moving the other one. I just soon have a nicer double wide as to the, the other one. But it will have an attached garage so that she can go inside and go in the back door and be inside when she goes in the house. So it's going to, it'll be set up to where, for, it'll be nice.
Okay. So it's a true statement that it could be a newer one?
It could be.
So you may not use the one you submitted with the pictures with.
That's why I said it like that, because I'm still looking.
Yeah, okay.
Any further questions? Seeing none for the questions, planning, we'll not hear from the staff.
This property is East Fourth Avenue, just a little bit outside the city of Hutchinson. Zone residential and residentially zone properties, when they are vacant, they do require a conditional use permit to place a manufactured home on there. Regulations will also say that the manufactured home has to be newer than 1994 to be placed in this zone area of the county. And so if this is approved, at the time of the permitting, will require the title, bill of sale, something that proves that what he is moving in on the property is going to be allowed and is going to comply with the year. One question about another manufactured home of the property. The property's only about 0.88 acres, so it is a The property is only about .88 acres, so it is a legal non-conforming parcel of ground, because three acres is the minimum in our residential one zoning district. And so two manufactured homes would not be able to be placed on, on this property as it is right now. And you've heard that there is an existing septic well on, on the property from previous manufactured homes. In, in your packet, you just see the pictures of one option that he has with the manufactured home. You heard testimony that it may be something newer, maybe like a double wide. But your focus should be, should we allow this property to be used for a manufactured home? It still has to comply with our, with our regulations, again, 1994 or newer. So you're not necessarily limiting it to a 1995. If he does find something newer, then he could certainly bring that in to that property. What you're focused on is should we allow a manufactured home to be placed on, on this property here? Kind of going through some of the pictures here. This is the sightline he showed, he provided here of that .88 acres. It's just taken off of the website. This is a current picture that was submitted with the application showing what the property looks like right now. If you haven't been by the property, it was severely overgrown with trees, tall grass, weeds. And he's done a significant amount of work on that property to clear it out with the hopes of being able to place a manufactured home on the property. Again, parcels in the area. The one we questioned is highlighted in blue. The other parcels in the area are highlighted in red. To the south and the west is a large pasture, farm field, if you will. To the east is a few other smaller parcels with, with single-family dwellings on them. On the north side of the road, you have some larger parcels, kind of intermixed with some other smaller parcels. Is strictly a residential area. And so the question that you would have, what I'm before you, is a manufactured home and appropriate land use for this area of the county. A little bit closer view, again, these pictures were taken probably prior to his cleaning up of the property. Numerous trees are on the property or were. This is a Google Earth shot taken from 2023. You can see how overgrown the, the property was. Again, I went back and did some research, and I did not see any manufactured homes, you know, on the property. The appraiser's office had it listed as vacant in 2012. So that kind of corresponds with his testimony that back in the 70s and 80s, there were two manufactured homes on the property. I did not see any evidence as far as aerial photography that, that there was any manufactured homes. I might have saw one manufactured home back in the 2006. I think you could see one that was in the trees. And so I believe, what are you saying, that, yeah, there were probably one, at least one, if not two of them out there at one time. They've since long been, been removed. So current regulations do require that to be a conditional use permit. This is a picture of the, the house that is to the east. It's very hard to kind of see, but it is like a stick-built house. And then further to the west, there's another one that is a, a stick-built house. So reviewing this, I think, you know, you kind of take into consideration what the surrounding area is like, but also the fact that this property has been vacant for, for many years. I would note on page six at the top, there is an error in there. On the second paragraph, I said the staff concludes that the proposed land use, which would be a single-family dwelling, is considered compatible with the surrounding area. So the word B should be removed, in case you were wondering if you didn't catch that. The word B should be removed from that sentence. So it should be that staff believes that the single-family dwelling land use is compatible with the area, but maybe a manufactured home may not be considered a compatible land use that surrounds this area. Looking on the length of time that the property has remained vacant, again, we had discussed that, you know, previously. The highest and best use of this land, though, should be a, a single-family dwelling. Mr. Smith does have other options to place a single-family dwelling. We would allow a shed house to go on there without a permit, without a conditional use permit. We would allow modular. You know, we would certainly allow a stick-built house to go on there without a permit. And he is choosing to place this manufactured home on the property. But again, then you would have to weigh the fact that this property for several years has been overgrown and probably even considered a blight on, on that neighborhood area. I also want to call your attention, though, the comprehensive plan. I believe that this does comply with our comprehensive plan, and the number one reason being that we want to recognize the use of manufactured homes as an affordable housing solution. And that, I think, is one of the most important things we need to consider in this situation. This parcel is not amongst a, a small residential subdivision. It's not intermixed with a lot of other parcels that have houses of manufactured nature. But the fact that, you know, we, we have a parcel here that is vacant, I think a manufactured home in this period case is not going to be a concern for that neighborhood, as you heard testimony. You know, he's, he's already cleaned the property. He's going to take care of it as for a family member. It may not always be, but I think one of the things to keep in mind is it's not within a residential subdivision that we are placing this manufactured home on. The other correction I'd want to bring to your attention here is on page 10, under number 10, the paragraph that starts with, even though staff believes a manufactured home is not compatible with the other housing types in the neighborhood, the parcel is not within a residential subdivision or a highly concentrated residential area. It's the last sentence there. No comments were received from the public, which could suggest no concerns with Mr. Smith's proposal. The comment that you have in your packet was submitted the day that I had mailed this out, and so I did not get a chance to remove that comment. We did receive one comment from the public that was against this petition. So I just want to bring that to your concern here, that we did receive one comment, and so it was a conflict with my staff report. Looking at all the factors in play here with this proposal here, staff does recommend approval of the request based off of the nine factors. And then we do have two conditions of approval we place on there, pretty much that the applicant needs to meet all state, federal, and local regulations, which would include the setting up of the manufactured home. And then we reserve the right to rescind the conditional use permit should there be something on the property that is not in conformance with our approval tonight. That could be something that he decides to bring in a, a 1986 manufactured home, for example. That would be something grounds that we could rescind the conditional use permit, so. With that, are there questions for me?
These are two driveways off of 4th Street into that old property?
There are two driveways. It appears to be. You can see the, the one, and there's one that's right up, right up here. I have been in talks with Mr. Smith on that, if he'd be willing to potentially have that driveway removed. It's existing now. It's, if he wants to keep it, he can certainly keep it. I think staff and maybe Don would maybe agree. If, if he would like to have that removed, we would like to remove that, because I believe it's a non, a non-compliant driveway right now. And so if he wants to remove it, I think our staff would do that. But he doesn't have to if he doesn't want to.
Well, just, I think I heard him say he was going to add a attached garage on the, for one end, and I thought, that's the driveway that's going to be used. It's pretty close to the east boundary, and I assume that the setback requirement would be okay there?
It would have to be. It, 10 foot, so you're looking at 30 feet off the road right of way, 10 feet off the east and west, and 20 foot off the south property line, plus being in compliance with septic and well setbacks as well with that. So you'll have to note that on, on the permit, how far it is from that, so we can use that.
So that little strip of land, just to the east of it, belongs to the land to the south?
Correct. That's the way the parcels are drawn.
Even though the driveway goes to the house?
Yeah.
To the east?
Yes. Don't know the history on that.
Yeah.
Yes, but I think you're right.
So the, I was confused too, because your colored outlines, is that the actual boundary lines of the parcels?
This is the parcel boundary as depicted by beacon, not obviously...
How about the one on the other side, the red one?
The red one. This is the other parcel, and then there's a strip of ground presumably to get to the farm field.
Okay.
Plus also here, yeah. So it's, I've done probably many, many years ago, and I do not know the history of that.
The driveway into that other house.
Yeah, the driveway goes off of here and then into, into that house.
You said something about the two driveways were too close together?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay, but it's like that's the problem to the guy that lives to the east. They're crossing somebody else's...
So there's, his driveway is right here, and then the one, then the one to the other house is right there. So I had visited with him about possibly removing that if he doesn't need it. Mm-hmm.
Mark, hypothetically, if one of those old mobile homes was still physically there, like abandoned, derelict, whatever, like, could somebody place a new, a newer manufactured home by right, or do you still have to go through the conditional use permit?
You could do that, yeah.
If it was there?
If it's newer than 1994.
Okay.
So you couldn't replace it with a 1975, for example. It'd have to be proven that it's newer than 1994. Yeah, we've allowed that in the past, so.
But once it's there?
If you have an older, if you have a 1970s or so, you can't replace it with a 1980, for example.
Because you can upgrade it to a modern one.
Yeah, but, because this was vacant, it's been vacant for more than a year, then you lose any kind of grandfathering, if you will, with that. You have a year or so.
But if we approve this tonight, then later on, they could go and swap it with a newer manufactured home by right?
This is approved tonight, and it is the 1995. And it turns out to be not, not working for them, for whatever reason, needs more room. They want a double wide, or they need a newer one for some reason, it's beyond repair, then yes, he would be able to swap that 1995 out with a 2020, for example. And it would just be a permit. It would not become before the board.
No matter the footprint.
No matter the footprint. Yeah, because you're, you're approving a manufactured home. Yeah, we're not, we're not approving a, a single wide manufactured home or strictly a double wide. We're approving a manufactured home subject to our zoning regulations, which is 1994. Yep.
Next, though.
So what's the gold in about 1994?
1994 is the year that HUD changed the way manufactured homes were constructed.
So built to a higher standard or...?
Higher standards, higher standard. Before 1994, they were constructed to a different standard, not necessarily worse, but 1994 is when they made the switch. And so when we adopted the regulations, we wanted that higher, higher standard.
Okay.
And so that's what we said. In the zone area of the county, yeah, that's what we wanted to put in.
Any other questions for staff? Now, Mark? If there's anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this case, you may have five minutes to comment. Please come forward to the podium one at a time and state your name and address for the record before commenting. Audience members are only permitted to address the planning commission from the podium. Audience members are permitted only one time at the podium. In interest of time, if you agree with the, the comments previously made by audience members, please don't repeat the comments. Simply state you agree with the previous and then present new information to the planning commission. Statements and questions should only be directed to the planning commission, not the applicant or staff. The planning commission may choose not to answer questions or engage with the public. Questions regarding the application may, can be asked to the planning commission and answered by the applicant during the rebuttal phase of this, of this public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this?
Can I?
Just a minute. Seeing none? Do you have any, any additional comments you'd like to make?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that that's a, that's an easement right here. You get into here if they ever, somebody ever did something back here. I just talked to this guy just, just this last week, and he told me that that's an easement, that there was an easement back there for whatever reason. So I didn't, I didn't, since it's on his side, I didn't think it mattered to me at all. And as far as the driveways, as soon as I figure out, you know, whether we want to circle drive, or we want to put, where we want to put the garage, blah, 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 then I'll make that decision on the, on the, the other driveway.
Any other questions for me? Thanks. Staff, do you have any additional comments?
I have no comments.
Does the commission have any further questions for the applicant or staff?
No.
The public hearing is now closed. Acceptance or denial of the reason, of the conditional use permit must be based on the factors that are listed in the staff report and found in the audience chairs. This is the time for the planning commission to discuss the case and ask procedural questions of staff only. Is there any further discussion?
I did drive by the Smiths' other two properties, and I did find them to be well-kept and very good condition. I know that was one of the concerns of the, in the comment, that, you know, that there's properties around that have junk vehicles and what have you, and I saw nothing even close to that, so. And I appreciate them investing in some affordable housing. Certainly something our county is in need of.
And I second that, you know, the applicant has stated his every intent to keep it looking good, and he offers his property as indication and makes some weight with me.
Any other comments? If none, the chair will entertain a motion on this case.
Mr. Chair, I move that case number 2025-04, the request by Rocky and Dana Smith requesting a conditional use permit from the Reno County zoning regulations to place a manufactured home on a parcel of land zoned R1 rural residential district be approved based on the nine factors and two conditions of approval listed in the staff report and is heard at this public hearing.
I'll say. Been moving second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, staff, please call a roll.
Strain?
Yes.
Shaffer?
Yes.
Seltzer?
Yes.
Macklin?
Yes.
Martin?
Shrit?
Yes.
And Gertsen?
Yes.
Thank you, Rocky. Appreciate it. Okay. Statements previously read for the previous case will still stand. I'll now formally open public hearing regarding case number 2025-05, a request by Inland Ocean Vineyards LLC, applicant James Lermore, for a conditional use permit to construct a 40-foot by 80-foot building for the purpose of establishing an event venue for community gatherings and retail sales store inside an existing winery building for the sale of products not produced on site on a parcel of land zoned ag agricultural district. The property is located at 4704 East 43rd Avenue. Have any of the planning commission members had any outside contacts regarding this case?
No.
No.
Do any of the planning commission members have any, have a conflict of interest in this case?
No.
Will the applicant please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record? You have 10 minutes to present your, your case. Additional time may be allotted to the applicant at the discretion of the chair. Planning, any planning commission members may request clarification at the end of your presentation.
Thank you. Dr. James Lermore, I've been in Hutchinson since 2020, working at the Hutchinson Clinic. In 2018, I purchased this parcel of land in conjunction with Doug Baker, who's here tonight. And we arranged to have him have 30 acres, so I could have 40 acres. And we, he had an existing fence here. He didn't want to move, so we had a survey to accommodate that 40 acres for both of us. In 2018, cleared out a lot of thousands of dead cedar trees that have been burned and put a vineyard in this area right here. put a vineyard in this area right here. You can kind of see it on the outline. There's two acres, there's 1,400 plants. We harvest about 16,000 to 18,000 pounds a year and we have about 50 apple trees that we're bringing along. So one thing led to another. We started a vineyard and then we started a winery and we started to get busier. We started getting a lot of requests from people even as far as Wichita who wanted to have a wedding and we couldn't really accommodate weddings where we were. We have nice little buildings and a nice winery, but it's really not a wedding venue. And then we had people who wanted to know whether we could accommodate 50 or 100 people for Christmas parties and et cetera. And so we decided, well, maybe we should put a venue up in here and that's pretty much the impetus. I won't go into a lot of long wind in this, Mark, we're out of computer finishing up this document for you, so I'm happy to take any questions that you have. Regarding a couple of other things, retail, we're talking about, not a grocery store, we're talking about Inland Ocean Vineyard cups, Inland Ocean Vineyard's t-shirts, things like that, things that we manufacture in addition to that. But in terms of outside stuff, we're not really bringing anything and it's not trademarked for our, or pictured for our vineyard. Been in business since 2018, 2019 actually was our first vintage. So I'm happy to answer any questions. And one last thing, Mark is an extraordinarily complete guy and so he's like, you know, Jim, if there's anything in here that you think you might do, put it in here so we can have it in here, you know, if you want to do DNA testing on woolly mammoths or something like that. We don't. But there is an area in here about live music outside and I want to stress, I have absolutely no interest in rock bands or loud music outside, but we may on occasion have a guitarist or somebody like that or a vocalist, nothing extraordinarily loud. I am concerned for the surrounding area of which really it's Doug and his wife Kim are the only ones that could really hear that, but we're trying to do a better job than Kansas State Fair in terms of limiting noise, so. Questions?
You are able to sell your own product on site, though.
Uh, yeah, we do now, we have since 2020, 20... Yeah, 2020.
Any other questions for the applicant?
When I reviewed this with, with my wife, telling her, she, to me, they asked, well, what are they going to do about that road going out to that public road? So I, it's her question I'm asking.
In fact, I stopped the road grader today and said, you know, if you got some asphalt hiding somewhere, we could sure use it. But they grade that road about three times a week. It seems like putting asphalt on it might be a little bit more cost-effective than grading it all the time and the truckers do complain about, they have to slow down because it does get bumpy, but they grade it about three times a week and so when it's graded for at least half a day, it's pretty decent.
Well, she gets an opportunity, she'll come out there again, but even though she will remind me about the bumpy dusty road.
It is a bumpy dusty road. Despite that, we get a lot of people out and we sell a lot of wine and they have a lot of fun. We tour the vineyard and teach people how to make wine and explain how wine is tasted, et cetera. We would like to, we would like to have a nicer area even for the tasting room. I mean, if you've ever been to a really nice vineyard, they've got, and winery, they've got nice big open areas inside with a bar and places for people to sit and look at their laptops and so forth. We're not going to be a bar. We're going to sell our wine and Sand Hill Brewery beer and that's all. That's our plan.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you. Another here from the planning, planning staff.
Again, we're located a little north of the city limits of Hutchinson, east of old K-61 highway. Everything you see here in the purple is the Hutchinson city limits. All these parcels here have the potential to have houses on it. We did have a permit issued on number 13, so there is a house that is under construction or may be completed by now on parcel number 13. The way the agricultural operations and exemptions work, just for your information on this, is a wine area is considered an agricultural venture, if you will. It's exempt from zoning regulations, just like any other type of agricultural operation. You can operate a winery without a conditional use permit, so that's why this is under operation right now. Buildings associated with that are exempt from zoning regulations as well, just a no fee zoning permit is all that is required. And so he's perfectly legal in the book to be able to do the winery, make his own winery on site, bottle it and even sell it. That's all exempt, that's not part of this case tonight. When you start getting into products that are not made on the site, such as, you know, coffee cups, you know, corkscrews, keychains, all that kind of material not made on site, that is not exempt from zoning regulations and requires a conditional use permit. So that's why we had the conversation, look, if we're doing an event venue proposal, then if you're planning on, even if it never happens, a retail store, then you need to put that in the conditional use permit. It's one hearing and we will take care of that, that type of land use as well. So I just kind of want to give you some background on why we're not having a public hearing on the winery operation, so. Again, the proposal, the main proposal is to have an event venue. You heard, heard him provide testimony on the type of events that are going to be occurring potentially on the property. Would point out that this property is within the city of Hutchinson's what we call notification area or, or area of influence, you may hear that. So we were required to send the city of Hutchinson notice of this public hearing as well as all the documentation with that. And the city of Hutchinson, as of today, have not submitted any kind of comments regarding this case. If they did and if they objected, then what that does, that actually triggers a supermajority vote by the county commissioners to potentially approve this land use here. Again, haven't heard anything from the city on that. So again, this is the parcel, you know, it's a 40-acre parcel of ground. There is a house that is located right over in this parcel right here. I'll have better pictures of that later. This is the site plan. Doesn't show up too good on the screen, but if you refer to your drawing, you'll see that he's got one main drive that will enter into the property and then it will circle around and lead into a main parking lot for the event center and presumably also for winery and customers for the retail store. There is a couple of auxiliary or overflow parking areas, I believe I referred to that in the site plan. They are located south of the pond and right up against the west property line. Regulations in the parking, we had to compute all that and required, I believe it was 52 parking stalls. The applicant in his site plan has provided 66 parking stalls. So it's really your, your job to determine if 66 parking stalls adequate for a, a venue that could potentially hold 150 people. I have reviewed that and I believe at this point in time that the 66 is probably adequate. The good news is that there's additional room on, on the property for additional parking should that be needed here. A little bit closer, closer view. Again, main parking lot is right here, the existing winery building is right here. You have two permits on file, he built the original one, then built an addition on here. The proposed venue is, is to the north and the east there and we've got an existing building here plus another greenhouse there and then further north of the pond, there is an observatory. Looking at aerial photography, you can see it's a 40-acre piece of ground. As you get closer back to the west, parcels start getting a little bit smaller. As you go further to the east, you'll see that the parcels are a lot larger. You may have noticed that on the, on the zoning permit, Park and Prairie Dunes Golf Course is right here, so that's obviously a very large, large parcel where there won't be any houses both now or in the future. There is a subdivision further to east, probably half, half mile away, consisting of three acre lots, roughly three to five acre lots. Everything else is large parcels. A little bit closer view, you can see the existing winery here. We've got an existing building here, a greenhouse and then the observatory further north. The grapes are growing up in that area, you can kind of see the lines up there, so they're north of the pond. Regarding the, the parking, you saw some reference to it in my, my staff report, I did have some concerns with the overflow parking area and the potential for headlights shining on the neighbor's, neighbor's house at certain times of the year. So you'll see in my staff report that I, I recommended a fence or some type of what we call live screen or trees be planted to kind of help shield that area here. You can ask those questions of, of Mr. Larmore if you wanted to. You certainly have the ability, if you don't feel that that is necessary, to issue a waiver of that requirement because it is in the regulations that we have to have some type of shielding and then if you so choose, then you could also remove that condition of approval in my recommendation. Again, a little bit closer, closer view. So main driveway area, you'll come, you'll circle around this area here and then the parking lot will be located in this area. And again, the overflow parking is going to be up in, in this area, somewhat close to the house to the west.
Mark, you indicated that there was potential for additional parking areas in the event, those were needed, if they needed more than the 66 spaces, where, where would those cars go? Do you have any idea?
Would that be up for him to decide? You know, he can go along the pond potentially or further to, to the east. Got to remember, I think he's looking at an additional septic system and he's, he's working with environmental on that, whether we have one big combined one or have a separate one, but there, there's room on the park. It may not be, you know, right near the winery, but you can go on the other side of the pond or you can go further to, to the east if you so chooses. This area may not be the greens, you can see there's a little bit of a hill right there that you have to work on, you know, cutting down or you can put additional parking along there potentially if, if he needed to. This picture is looking to the, to the south, just to kind of give you an idea of what it looks like across the street and you can kind of see the, the raised area, like the sand dunes here. It's kind of, it's not probably completely shield the parking area, but it'll, it'll assist in that, but one new house is going over here at the corner of Jupiter and, and 43rd.
Mark, the property to the east, I, I'm not sure what's happening to it. It looks like a war zone right now, the, or.
Yeah.
None major tree clearing there. Is, is there going to be any development that we know of?
Not that I know of. I do not know what the plans are for that, other than maybe just clearing cedar trees for fire prevention.
I think it's well beyond that, but.
Yeah. We know that, but I, I do not have any idea what the plans would be for, for doing something like that. This is the entryway. You see it's a little bit of a raised area in front. You see the, the winery in the background, the parking would be in front of that. Little bit different view, kind of looking to the, to the north and northeast. Side, only two sides on the property right here and then of course painted on the building. This would be the location of kind of where the, the event center would go, winery building right here, so off and behind that to go to the north and the east would be the new building. In the background here, you can see the, the observatory. So that's what it would look like. Further on, that'd be your view as you're driving down 43rd. So reviewing all of the factors, staff in the end has looked at that and has recommended approval of the request. It's based off of the 10 factors that you see listed in the staff report and I did have six conditions of approval. Should you choose to have the solid, solid fence with a live screen, I would note, again on condition number three, that there is a typo. It's the last full sentence here, it should be live screening, not L-E-V-E screening. So should you choose to leave that condition in, that needs to be changed to live screening, but my conditions are approved for the record. Parcels shall be developed as described in the site plan and the plan of operation dated March 10th. Any lighting of the parking lot area or building should be shielded and directed on the property. No lights directed onto the adjacent property. Again, talking about installing a, a four-foot fence or a live screen to kind of assist in shielding headlights from shining on the property to the west. And again, that's, that's also found in, in our regulations. Advocate shall meet all federal, state and local regulations. Again, we reserve the right as a county to rescind the conditional use upon any kind of violation of the regulations and then, and the other way, if there's any kind of changes in the character or the intensity of, of the parcel and not capability being discerned by staff, then they may need to come back for another conditional use permit. So if they, you know, are exceeding what we believe was the intent of this conditional use permit, then we may have to have another conditional use permit to allow them to expand beyond what the original intent. So for example, if they have a, a capacity of 150 people for the building and now all of a sudden it wants to grow to say 300, that may be an additional conditional use permit because of say parking and other factors, it could be septic and well and that. So that's the six conditions that I have recommended to this board, so. You got further questions?
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a comment on this case? You may have five minutes to comment. Please come forward to the podium at one at a time, state your name and address for the record before commenting. Audience members are only permitted to address the planning commission from the podium. Audience members are permitted only one time at the podium. In the interest of time, if you agree with the comments previously made by audience members, please don't repeat the comments. Simply state you agree with the previous and then present new information to the planning commission. Statements and questions should only be directed to the planning commission, not the applicant or staff. The planning commission may choose not to answer questions or engage with the public. Questions regarding the application, application can be asked to the planning commission and answered by the applicant during the rebuttal phase of this public hearing. Do you have anything more to add? Or comments, come on forward.
My name's Doug Baker and I, we live right next, Kim and I live right there, but if you could take it and put that back on the, the area, one of my concerns is the one that just had the dotted line around it, the very first one.
Oh, okay.
That one. One of my concerns is this, and then if we're going to put in, if their venue is going to be put in over here, you know, listen to how big it could be. Is there a chance that they could move this city limits in and incorporate this into the city? Maybe I'm asking the wrong group of people, but I'm worried about that.
Worried about the city of Hutchinson, like annexing that area? Yeah. I mean, that's certainly a potential, you're right, adjacent to the city limits, that'd be their, their right to be able to annex that in. That would be something that, you know, this board definitely would be able to, you know, assist on. But yeah.
That, that's one of my concerns. Then the other one is funny you brought up the road because I've heard it from multiple people, but I think if we're going to have that type of traffic out there, we're going to have to do something, at least put speed, limit signs in because those kids from Bueller come through there and sometimes they're going 80 miles an hour. I mean, we've pulled people out of the ditch, gone through fences and they need to slow it down there because that is a terrible road. It's rough. That's, those are the main things I wanted to talk about. I don't know if Kim's going to come up and say anything either, but thank you for your time. time.
Thank you.
Do you want me to fill it out?
Yeah. That's what you do. Kim, Mark, and again, I'm the house to the west. This is really tough because we are friends with the applicant being next door to him. I just, when we moved out there 20 some years ago, we liked the solitude. We liked the privacy. I feel like we're going to lose that. You know, when you're talking about the parking up against our property, you know, we're, like I say, we're outside a lot. I just feel like we're going to lose our privacy. I mean, right now, they have wine tastings and tours of the vineyard. So yes, we have people walking through there, but that's just my concern. Like I say, it's hard because we're friends with them. Don't know whether this, you know, there's any, anything or not, but just my opinion.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Is there any other comment?
Is that coming again?
Yep. Hang on just a second. Make sure there isn't anybody else that wants to go, and let's go.
Can you put up the zoomed in? I'll get your stuff. You know, honestly, I share all of Kim's concerns. You know, where I would like to put this building is over here, but we're not going to, we're going to try to hide it behind these bums, and it's going to kind of go out this way and hopefully be shielded by these buildings to the extent possible. My plan, I apologize, you know, I drew the parking over here because I thought, I've got 40 acres, I can put parking anywhere I want, and it never occurred to me then that Mark would catch this and go, wait a minute, the lights are going to shine onto the neighbor. I have no interest in doing that. It would not put any parking lot along there, and Doug probably wouldn't let me put a four foot fence up there anyway. So I would move the parking to whatever adequate parking was required to include it into the parking lot that's going to sit here. And I'm going to take this dirt to shield as much as possible, the parking from the street. So there's plenty of room there to put in a lot of parking spots. And so I have no need to really put them in the other places and honestly, it won't be. But I could put them back here on this, we can put them over here on this. I'm not going to put them up against Doug's lot. The other thing is, we probably have, on any given week, five to 15 people come through. And occasionally, we'll have, you know, groups of nurses or teachers or whatever, that'll be 15 or 20, that'll come for an hour or two, usually early afternoon. And I anticipate that our biggest events, if we can get them, will be the weddings that some of the brides have asked us about. And those will be fairly infrequent. Probably, we'd like to have 30 a year, but that's 30 days out of 300. And we're going to try to keep this shielded away from Doug and Kim as much as possible. I respect their, her concerns. They're also my concerns, and to the extent possible, we're going to try to address those. With regard to the city limit question, I mean, I don't want to be at the city limits either. So is it possible that because I put a building out there, that's going to make the city go out there and grab that property? That's not reasonable.
No, no.
They could do it, but they wouldn't do it because I'm putting a building out there?
Right, yeah. They cannot annex you because you're greater than a 21 acres. They'd have to have your consent to annex your parcel.
And Doug's as well.
No, not his. They could take his.
Well, his parcel's 40 acres.
Yeah. Well, I was looking at, I was looking at parcel eight, it's separated, even though he owns both tracks, yeah. That question, I don't know, that'd be, you know, to see. But yeah, they may not be able to take his either.
Could he get around that by replating that or changing that zoning on that to be ag with the rest of it or not?
Not changing the zoning necessarily, but if it's considered a 40 acre tract, then potentially, you could potentially do that. I don't know how they would look at it if it's two separate tracks, yeah, like that. But yeah, being right outside the city limits, I mean, that's a possibility.
Well, they did it to me. I mean, I live here.
Right.
At 21, and we were in county for a long time, and then we got to have the increased taxes and no additional anything, but I'm complaining. Thank you. Any other questions?
Any other questions for that?
So are you consenting to relocating your overflow parking?
Absolutely. I don't, I'll put that overflow parking anywhere on there except up against that fence. I don't, I don't really want it to be there. Honestly, Mark, the lot that I had, I don't remember how many spots it had, but.
Forty.
Forty, you know?
Yeah.
And that only came to about here. I could extend that lot down and put those other 16 parking spots or something in there, and I probably would prefer to do that anyway.
Okay. So then. I would need a revised site plan if this board accepts that revise, that revision that you're considering or consenting to, then, because I need the most up to date.
Okay. Thank you. Staff, do you have any additional comments?
No, not as a rebuttal.
Okay.
We can discuss, plan forward after you have your discussion.
All right. Does the commission have any more, any other comments or questions for applicant or staff?
Was the township contacted? Because I had people mention the road as well.
Yes, the township's always sent a notice of the public hearing, and I did not receive anything from the township.
They didn't have any feedback one way or the other?
Rarely does the township respond, yes.
But we tried.
But we tried.
Any further questions? The public hearing is now closed. Acceptance or denial of the conditional use permit must be based on the factors that are listed in the staff report and found on the audience chairs. This is the time the planning commission can discuss the case and ask procedural questions of staff only.
Question, if we approve this, can we approve that subject to resubmission of the site plan?
Yes, so the board has the option, then if you accept Mr. Laramore's proposal to relocate that parking, then obviously, condition number one does not apply. You don't want to accept the conditional use permit with that site plan. You want a revised site plan. And then also based on that, then condition number three could also probably be removed for any type of recommendation of approval by this board. So then.
Three.
Dealing with the fence or the live screen along the west property line.
Okay. Oh. You got two threes. You don't have a five. Two threes and a quarter and no five. That's why I confused, Mark.
The first number three.
Oh, look at the second number three.
Yeah, yeah, don't look at the second.
That should be four.
That should be four. A long week. Yeah, so the first number three, dealing with the live screen and the fencing, could be considered for removal if he's consenting to relocating the overflow parking lot. So then, if you would, then you have the option of continuing this public hearing to next month, so you can review the revised site plan, or you can recommend approval subject to him submitting the revised site plan to staff. That would be another option. If you like what he has now proposed to combine the overflow parking and add on to the existing parking lot, you could require a new site plan be submitted to me for my approval before it goes on to the county commissioners for their approval. So it's strictly up to this board whether you want to see the site plan that's been revised and review it. You can continue this hearing to May, or you can put it in my hands and say, submit the new site plan to me.
What's your wishes?
Let me say, if we want to approve it, I would just suggest we make it subject to submission of a new site plan, Mark.
Yeah.
We don't need to come back.
I would agree with that.
Have this on the agenda again.
So do we need to have a, do we need to have an official motion to change the, change the, change those conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'll give it a shot.
You need to discuss how you want to do.
But that has to just read into the, into the, into the, into the whole holistic motion for the case, and that we don't need to have, we don't need to vote on the changes to the conditions.
No, no.
That was my question.
If the consensus is to move to approve, then somebody can make that motion, and then they would just.
State the.
End their motion, eliminate the first number three, and then make the motion to require the owner to submit a revised site plan, according to that effect.
That sound, that sound all right with the rest of the board?
Yeah.
And the second subject's the live screen, whether you want that as part of this or something.
That was, that was in three, wasn't it?
Yeah.
That was in condition three, that would be deleting.
This is a bit of a side comment, but I would like to thank the property owners for the dialogue in making zoning things work out. I think it's an important precedent for us to keep in mind for property owners to have this venue, that they can be honest about their concerns and be willing to be part of the solution. So it's not, it's just nice to see that there's options to just hard and fast regulations that common sense can prevail. So thank you.
One other comment or question to Mark. If we make this motion, you know, in your canned one you get, you sent out, you indicated six conditions. Can we say conditions one, two, four, five, and six, even though four and five are misnumbered?
Yes.
Would that be all right?
Yeah, that's fine. Yes.
Chair will entertain a motion on this case.
Okay, I would move the case number, I'm going to try this anyway. Twenty-five dash oh five, request by Dunland Inland Oceans Vineyard LLC, applicant James Laramore, requesting a conditional use permit from the Rio County zoning regulation to establish an event venue for community gatherings and a retail sales store on the parcel land known as ag, agricultural district, be approved based on the 10 factors and conditions one, two, four, five, and six, as listed in the staff report and heard at this public hearing. Also, the approval would be subject to submission of a revised site plan relocating the overflow parking, subject to the approval of the planning department. I further move to approve a waiver from Article 11 dash 101 to not require the installation of a loading space based on the reasons listed in the staff report and had heard at this hearing.
I check up the motion.
That work? Okay.
Got to move in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
So as I understand it, then, just to clarify from my records, then, conditions one, two, four, five, and six are recommended for approval, plus an additional submit a revised site plan relocating the overflow parking.
Or enlarge the existing parking. Is that what you want?
Relocate overflow or enlarge existing parking to accommodate.
Accommodate the additional.
The additional parking. Okay.
Good?
Yes.
Any other comments, discussion? Staff, please call the roll.
Strand?
Yep.
Paper?
Yes.
Seltzer?
Yes.
Macklin?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Gerson?
Yes.
Who made the second? I.
I.
Next item of business is item C, discussion on proposed text amendment to Article 13, district height, area, and bulk regulations of the Reno County zoning regulations regarding minimum setback requirements, minimum lot requirements, and minimum lot dimensions.
If you want to stay, if you wanted, if you're curious, you could stay.
This is really exciting stuff.
Thanks, Mark.
I'd like to have some conversation with you, as I do, Bob, when you were a little kid, home, went to high school, and was in the same scout troop. I do Paul and Abel Go Bowl, and my parents were the same age.
It's rude to leave.
Yeah, business card so I can.
I know, yeah, they could be done.
They could be. Let's take a five minute recess, Liz. We'll be back after these minutes. Be back after these minutes.
I know we're one to move. That really isn't the right word. I want to do systematically through this.
I think that would be, give us a little background would be helpful as far as the overall picture that we're looking at.
The thing is more than just background, it's general education.
Yes.
Recognizing that we have an absent commissioner that needs more education than most.
Yeah.
That's why, yeah, it's unfortunate he's unable to attend tonight and stuff. Yeah. I can give you.
I don't think we need the whole process.
Give us a high level overview and then maybe next month we kind of start with that, review that overview and then dive into the nuts and bolts. How does that sound?
Okay, and I guess I will rely on this board to stop me if it's too much or.
Okay. I'm hungry, let's him to know.
Well, how about if I give you five minutes?
Five, old man.
How about fifteen?
Okay.
You get fifteen minutes.
Five fifteen.
There you go.
I thought maybe five was too much.
If the pizzas show up, it's too long.
Gotcha, I follow you. So anytime in the fully zoned area of the county, somebody wants to divide their land, sell a portion of their land, and that division is less than forty acres in size, that requires one of three processes by me. It requires a smittle of an agricultural lot split. If you're zoned agricultural, it will require a lot split if you're zoned some type of residential. Those two processes are for if a person would want to sell a portion of their land for a new house, a new building site. If your neighbor would like to purchase, you know, ten feet of your land for whatever reason, maybe his driveway is too close to your land, he'd like to have a little separation, whatever the point may be, then that's called a boundary adjustment. So, you know, hey, I'd like to purchase ten feet of your land, ten feet by five hundred feet long, because I'd like to be able to build this building and I've got a setback issue. So, hey, Mr. Strang, can I interest you in purchasing a portion of your land for that person? If the parties agree, then they submit it to me and it's a boundary adjustment.
Is there a maximum of, you said ten feet, for example, but what if I want a hundred feet?
No, there is no maximum and I can tell you that I've done boundary adjustments for agricultural ground, believe it or not. So, the eighty acres or what have you is in a trust and they're dismantling the trust and this adjacent person over here wants thirty-five acres of that and the other farmer over there wants to have forty acres or thirty-six acres of that, the other guy only wants twenty. Those are all boundary adjustments because they're not creating a brand-new parcel to build on. They're just adding farm ground to their existing farmsteads.
And on a boundary adjustment, if you're not involving the exchange of land, purchase or sale, can you use that to reconfigure a parcel? We have an existing state square parcel and you say, well, I'd rather have it longer than narrower. Can you do a boundary adjustment to reconfigure that coming up in the same area?
So you've got a forty out of a quarter. And you've got, it's exactly square, but you want to cut that.
Right, you want to change the dimension.
To a long forty instead of a square forty.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, it would be, that'd be a boundary adjustment because you're not creating a new tract of ground that's going to be built on.
Changing the boundaries of the existing tract.
You have ten acres around your house and the person adjacent to you has thirty-five acres. For whatever reason, maybe you want to take in a large stand of trees that's just to the north of your property line and this person maybe doesn't want it.
You're getting into two parties. I'm saying this is all just one party. He owns a hundred percent of the ground and he wants to reconfigure that parcel from, say, a square parcel to more of a.
Well, he would have to buy additional.
No, if he owns the land already.
I don't know how that scenario.
Say you have, you own two tracts of land and one of them is just a square tract, X acres.
Two separate.
You own the land surrounding it also, but can you take that, say that that's ten acre tract and it's a square, can you move that to, say, it's a ten acre tract, but narrow it, make it longer in a boundary adjustment?
It's changing the parcel size.
It's changing the parcel.
It's changing the parcel size.
No, not the size, the same acres.
Changing the length and the depth.
Yeah, length and depth, yes.
It was a length and a width.
Yeah, yeah. Would that be a boundary adjustment?
I, no, I guess not. I don't know why would a person want to do that then.
I do.
Well, that's what I mean. That's why, it's going in my mind why you wanted.
Are they doing that to sell a property? Are they doing it to sell a property scenario?
Yeah.
I mean, a parcel is illegal.
Well, if they're wanting to sell a portion of that, then yeah.
Change description, you'd have to have it resurfaced or something, yeah.
Yeah, if you're wanting to potentially sell a portion of that, then yeah.
You could do that.
Yeah, then you do that.
I mean, like, maybe there's a pond on it or something and they want to get the pond all on one.
Right.
Parcel or the other.
Yes, so then that would be a boundary adjustment. And what we're looking for in lot splits or boundary adjustment is that the two parcels or three parcels, however many involves, all of the parcels still remain in conformance with the minimum acreage requirements. And so, for example, if you have, you know, a five acre residential one parcel and you want to sell three acres of that to your neighbor that is also zoned R1, that's going to leave you with two acres and he'll have nine acres. Well, he'll be in conformance, but now your parcel is now not in conformance with the minimum acreage requirement. So that type of boundary adjustment in that case would not be approved because you're dropping your parcel below.
And that's what you're saying is in Article thirteen, the minimum lot area in square feet, that's where that's described.
Then a lot area, or if he takes a portion of that and drops the width or the depth below those numbers, that would be another type of scenario. Or you would not be allowed to do that. The other thing that we look at, both in the environmental side and the zoning side, is that you're not making a building, a wastewater system, a well now non-compliant with those setbacks. Environmental has setback requirements for wastewater and wells from property line. It's issued, it's in, it's perfect, but then now when you're going and you're going to change that parcel better, now you could potentially make that system non-conforming and that's another scenario where that would not be approved by environmental. So every one of these reviews goes through me and also through environmental, especially when you're involving structures on a property. If it's just somebody splitting off vacant ground and another person has vacant ground, then necessarily go through environmental. They don't have anything to worry about in that sense. It just goes through me, so.
So the boundary adjustment has no minimum and no maximum?
No minimum, no maximum.
And so when you adjust that, does that make any of those, you're adjusting, you're playing with two parcels. When you're doing a boundary adjustment, you're playing with two parcels. Does any adjustment create a legal non-conforming?
Then you can't do that adjustment.
Then you can't do the adjustment. So it's got to stay within that.
Both, the adjustments, both.
That's what you were saying about the minimum square feet. I got you now. I'm starting to understand.
So if you've got.
So if I've got an ag and I want the R1, I've got an R1 that I want to adjust the boundary to. I can't go less than three acres, so.
So, yeah, you could have fifteen acres. You're going to be zoned R1.
Say I've got.
I don't want that back pasture anymore. I'm getting out of the farming business, whatever. I just want my little three acres. I'm retiring, whatever, and I don't want the rest of that. But my neighbor, he wants all of that and you're going to sell off eleven, twelve acres of that and that's going to leave you with two point five acres R1 with a house. No.
I got you. That's, I understand that now.
So those are the types of situations that we review here in-house that doesn't come before this board. The only thing that comes before this board is what we call the homestead lot split and we've done two of those where somebody wants to split off their house and can't meet the requirements of Article thirteen. And so they're going to do an easement that leads out to the road. That's the only scenario where we can approve something, but that actually takes your review and county commission approval to be able to have somebody split off seven acres in the middle of an eighty, for example. We've got a couple of those in the past. Lot splits have to meet certain requirements. If you're in the agricultural district, you're limited to a seven acre maximum split. When we first adopted these regulations, we really set the goal of two houses per forty acres in the agricultural district. So if somebody has a forty, they can put a house on it. And if they have relative or not, you know, and they want to sell off some other land for another person to build a house, they're limited to seven acres maximum and then that's your two houses per forty acres that you're allowed without going through a lot of planning process, a lot of review process by us and this board. Doesn't say that you can't have a third house or a fourth house or what have you on that forty. It just means that if you want to, now you're going to rezone and now you're going to plat and you're going to go through the subdivision regulations.
So you need to really think about whether seven acres is the right number or not.
How was the seven acres arrived at originally?
That's been the million dollar question. I can tell you, as I recall, I think I'm probably the only one here that was in place. You weren't here and you did the comp plan, but you didn't do the regs, did you?
Nope.
Yeah, and so the issue is always, a farmer does not want to sell off, say, ten acres. It used to be ten acres in the ag. A lot of farmers or people living out in the agricultural district did not want to sell ten acres to be able to split the existing house off. It had to do with the existing old farmhouse. They wanted to keep the land, but didn't want the house anymore. There's a ten acre minimum in the ag or you could petition to rezone. Both options, some weren't very good. Rezone is a three-month process to go through. That's not necessarily good for anybody. Ten acres wasn't good because they want to keep as much farm ground as they can. They just want to cut a little box around the house. Still had to be, like I say, a minimum of three. So discussions amongst former planning commission members, our consultant at the time, we settled on seven acres. That way they can keep more of the farm ground as income. I don't think there's a scientific reason why we chose seven acres. It was just something that was less than ten. We knew ten acres was an issue with a lot of people, so we settled on seven and still had a minimum of three in place. And that worked good for a while, but now it seems to be turning into more of an issue with people, so.
Are people wanting smaller splits?
No.
No, they actually want larger now.
Wanting larger ones.
Larger.
We're separating some of this. We have bought a quarter section of ground and there was a house on it. And he had somebody that wanted to buy the house and twenty acres, but he couldn't. He could only buy the house with seven acres.
So the idea is, what is the minimum acreage? Are we going to allow one split in the ag? And that can be a ten and a thirty, a twenty and a twenty, a three and a thirty-seven or whatever you want? Or do you still want to have a maximum acreage for a split instead of seven? Make it twenty? I mean, that's going to be the task. I think internally we discussed about maybe getting rid of that and still permit only one split in the ag and that's the person's choosing whatever they want to do.
With a minimum of three acres.
With a minimum of three.
That makes sense. They can go up, they can go anywhere from forty to three acres.
Right.
So something to consider is you can only split a forty once, but you can split it any way you want to as long as one of them's not less than three acres.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
So then.
But once that's occurred, that forty can't be split ever again without being platted or something like that.
Right, it protects that.
Right. Right now you're running into the concerns about, we have with the depth ratios embedded within this article here where you can't do a flag lot. That's not going to meet the requirements. You know, they have to be squares, rectangles, the frontage along the road and the depth or the width that you create can't be greater than a three to one ratio in the residential. It's four to one in the agricultural, so that sometimes prevents somebody from acquiring a ten acres or taking a split all the way to the property line. Like if you have a quarter mile long parcel, you can't get to that thirteen hundred and twenty. It's going to be short unless you give me more road frontage and there's been parcels out there that doesn't work because you're running into another parcel that's out there, so.
So what, because there's flag lots out there now that I assume are old.
Old ones.
Splits. What's the, what are the problems we have with flag lots?
Well, a lot of the problems.
You're under the gun, aren't you, Mark?
A lot of the problems, you know, is the fact that it's a road frontage thing. It's a road frontage thing because it used to be you had sixty foot of road frontage required in the county. You give me sixty feet of road frontage, you give me three acres, you get a permit. So, you know, a lot of people have ten, fifteen acres with an eight hundred foot long driveway. Well, is there an issue with that? Well, I, no, if it's just one, if it's one house, I mean, who are we to say it's all right? You can do that. You can have an eight hundred foot long driveway in one house. The issue comes to play when you want to split that. I got fifteen acres. I don't need fifteen acres. I can't maintain fifteen acres. So I'd just like to sell off five or ten of that to somebody else and I'll give them an easement to use that driveway. Regulations don't permit easements. You have to have road frontage. Well, he doesn't have any road frontage. He's got sixty foot. It's not practical to buy land from somebody else to create, you know, an initial frontage. So now that guy is kind of stuck with fifteen acres forever. Remind me, I can show you a development that has done that, series of sixty foot long driveways. And I'll bring that next month and you can decide if that's a good development idea or not because that's what would happen potentially. So that's why in sixteen we increased it to a hundred and sixty-five feet to make sure that at least there's adequate road frontage for a parcel of ground and even the potential to split that without going through the plating process.
Something next week, next month is to show us some examples of how you calculate the ratio.
I mean, three to one, four to one.
The three to one, four to one, how that, how the, I'm a visual guy, so I'm going to, I might have to bring my crayons and play a little bit, but.
How it's calculated or how it's done or?
Yes, yes.
It's quite.
I can't, for some reason I can't visualize this. When you say, well, it doesn't beat the three to one ratio, I'm.
It's got to be a hundred feet wide and three hundred feet long.
There you go.
Three to one, there you go.
Three times as long as it is.
Yep, if you got two hundred foot of road frontage, the match you're going to have would be a six hundred foot depth parcel. And if those two numbers don't equal the minimum acreage for that zoning district, then you got to give me more frontage.
So how much of that, just what you just described, how much of what you just described gives you a heartburn like you wouldn't believe?
There's a lot. There's a lot with that.
So how?
I see the reasoning behind it.
So how can, all right, so I'll challenge you coming next month. What would ease that pain?
You just eliminate it. It's quite simple. Just eliminate that requirement. If we don't care how a parcel looks, then we can just eliminate that requirement. Like I say, I can show you other examples here where, you know, you start out like as a twenty acre parcel with whatever the depth of that's going to be and the parcel they want to cut out stops a couple hundred foot short of that, say, east property line or west property line. It stops short, so now you've got like an L that's created. Is that good development? But they couldn't get all the way to the back of that original parcel, that property line, because of the width and depth. So then what's happening is, okay, well, I'll do my, you know, ten acres, five acres here and get that and then I'll do another illegal division of land for the additional three acres that I wanted. It gets me to the original back property line. I know it's hard to visualize that until you see an example in front of you.
So if they give you heartburn, would you have more heart, just as much heartburn trying if somebody wants to put in a long skinny line? You know?
Yeah, that was going to be my next.
That's, I mean, that's the other issue. I mean, is, you're asking for, I think you're asking for more issues. Do away with it.
Can we do away with the?
The ratio.
The ratio?
Yeah.
I think it's something that.
Or we can look at.
Needs to be discussed amongst us and amongst you is, is it a concern? Is it a concern of this board or is it?
If we look at amending those ratios.
You know?
You know, is it?
That's what it used to be. You know, we did not, we had subdivision regulations, but they weren't as strict as what these were and the subdivision regulations were just kind of there in case somebody wanted to follow them during a subdivision process. And now there's a lot more strict, and I always knew that going into these regulations that it wasn't necessarily going to be the zoning and the conditional use permit process that people had to go to. It would be on the subdivision side which would create the heartburn, to use your word.
Do you have many issues that come up in real life with these ratios where people are trying to do something and run up against them?
Oh, yeah, all the time. And you say issue, is there something that can't be done? I mean, people come to me and they want to do this. The regs don't permit that, you know? And so if that's what you mean by me having an issue, yeah.
Okay, going back to like those requests that you get, that you have to say no, are those reasonable requests though? If you didn't have the ratios?
Yeah.
I mean, would it just wind up with a, you're ridiculous.
I mean, if somebody that wants seven point eight acres, you know, and they want seven point eight acres because it takes it back to a fence line or it takes it back to a tree row or some other natural feature, but yet it's point eight acres too large.
The ratio won't allow it.
Or the ratio won't allow it, yeah. They're hemmed in where they can't just give me an extra fifty foot of frontage to get the extra fifty foot of depth that they need to take in that pond or take in that tree row or that fence line. I mean, yeah.
So how can we add some common sense into this?
Yeah, because these are all residential lots we're talking about with these ratio laws and so on.
But it applies, well, yeah, but it affects the ag in the sense that when they want to split that ag parcel and do something smaller than forty acres as well, so.
Because then you're looking at going into a R1 situation, yeah.
Well, yeah, so then, okay, so then you say, okay, let's rezon it, you know, down to a three acre minimum. Well, when you rezon from ag to residential, now you have to develop a subdivision plat and develop a minimum of eight residential lots because now you're telling me that this agriculture ground is no longer a viable land use. It's more suited to residential use. So then there, you got to develop subdivision plat. Show us, show the county how this is going to be laid out similar to what we did with the subdivision down south. How is this land going to look, develop out once you get all through? We want to see that to make sure every lot is buildable and we're not going to have issues with issuing permits and not going to have drainage issues, not going to have road issues, all that type of stuff.
So if you're looking at a situation where the landowner retires, wants to sell off the house, keep the farmland, does an ag lot split, then the tract with the house, how is that zoned, R1?
Still zoned ag.
Still zoned ag.
Still zoned ag. Still zoned ag and it's conforming, it's considered a conforming parcel. Even though it's zoned ag and it's only seven acres, it's still conforming because we have that ag lot split approved on file. So.
So those ratios would not apply in that situation?
The ratios do apply to the seven acres because in the regs, it treats it as a residential lot. So it's still the three to one ratio.
Still zoned reg.
Even though it's zoned ag.
Treat it as residential.
Well, and I put that in place because it didn't say anywhere in the regulations before we adopted it. Like, how is this treated? Is it a four to one? Is it a three to one? What are the setbacks? Are the setbacks fifty feet or are the setbacks thirty feet? I mean, there's all these questions.
For practical purposes, it's treated as an R1.
Because residential is not ag anymore. Even though it's zoned ag, it's a residential house.
Okay, yeah, clarifies that. Thank you.
Yep.
Food for thought.
There's fifteen minutes up yet.
Long.
I will try and bring this board next month, form a discussion on this and see where we want to go.
And thoughts on your setbacks?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, are there, what are the problems with the existing setbacks?
Their problem.
Their problem, yeah.
I know.
I assume that's what we're talking about. What do we do to fix it? What are your recommendations?
I mean, should they be uniform?
Yeah, there's. Tell us where your heart, where your real heartburn is and then we'll try to find a solution.
Can you tell we've had discussions?
One or two, maybe.
And I think some examples because like Russ mentioned, I'm a visual person.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. I can get these cases on the agenda, then, yeah, I'll try and work on.
Stuff you can put on the overhead.
Maybe the next meeting we need to rearrange the tables and he can have the chalkboard.
Yeah.
There you go.
There you go.
And you like to play on the chalkboard.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, we can sit on the other side of the table.
Yep. Yeah, if you don't mind, that way we can.
We'll just take that center and put it.
You can use this on the whiteboard and we can draw, you can put a, you can put a parcel on there through this and then we'll draw lines across it and play.
We don't have the cases. We don't have an audience.
Yep.
Well, if it's available, I'd like the historical perspective to, so we don't have to re-debate something that.
Somebody already did ten, fifteen years ago.
And think that we're smarter than they were.
Yeah, we are.
I just don't know how much of that is available.
Is there anybody still around that? I mean, it's Mark.
They're Dr. The regs?
Yeah, can, might still be. I have to look. In twenty sixteen.
Lisa, Lisa was there.
Lisa was there, yeah.
Can, yeah, there might be a few.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know if they would recall or not, but yeah.
One other question off the subject. We got this in our packet, this table of contents. Is that just to put in our books?
That's to put in your book, yeah.
Even though we don't have the updated regulations in the books, we can put these in.
You have the updated regs, do you not?
No, in a complete set of new regulations like in that book we got, I'm surprised, no. I don't think, you'd have to piece it together.
It was at your desk last month, right? Article twenty-six?
Probably.
Yeah, because I just got mine tonight.
Yeah, you guys were absent, so everybody else had theirs last, so do you not have it?
I probably do. Did you send them out, mail them?
No, I just, I had it at your desk last month.
Well, look and see if you have it and if you don't, I'd be happy to each other.
Okay, I'll look, I'll look.
And can you count to four?
Yeah.
One, three, five. I was absent the last meeting, so I probably don't have.
Only Alan and Garth were gone.
That was, that was. I don't know, too many meetings.
Let me know, yeah, seriously, let me know. I can get that to you or whatever.
If I can't find it, I'm sure I have it.
Yeah, the table of contents is part of your book.
Because one's smart enough to put where it belongs.
Yeah.
I moved with you.
Yeah, I second that. Been moving in second, all in favor of second.